Okay, it's 6:45, so I'm going to call the joint meeting on September 12th to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, flag to my left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do quick introductions here if we could, because we haven't done that in a while, and I think we have a new member that we didn't get to introduce before, so we'll get to him. John, if you can start on my far-left introductions.
John Mace, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Sue Tyler, City Council, District 2.
Jacqueline Olson, City Council, District 2.
Mark Peterson, Board of Finance.
Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District 3.
Jeff Cagiano, Mayor.
Eric Rosengren, City Council, District 1.
Andrew Howes, City Council, District 3.
Sebastian Panieto, City Council, District 1.
David Mikowski, Board of Finance.
Craig Kasemikas, Board of Finance.
And on Zoom, Glenn?
Glenn Heiser, Board of Finance.
Marie?
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
Good. Did I miss anybody? I don't think so. That's everybody. We have more than a quorum, a full crowd, pretty much. All right. Agenda item number one is approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on August 8th, 2023.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number two is the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? It's a long consent calendar that goes A through T, and these are lots of appropriations, many of the year-end types of things and other funds. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Hearing none, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any other additional comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. Let me make sure I catch up here to number three, which is to approve transfers totaling $1,822,186,000 within the general fund to close out the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? A lot of these are year-end changes, just for the audience and people listening on Zoom. This has all gone through the Board of Finance, through our Board of Finance meeting, and the Joint Board has to approve it, so we're going to try to move quickly through this, and we have a lot coming up. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four, to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2022-2023 to fiscal year 23-24 totaling $899,883 within the general fund.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And just so we get in the rhythm here, if you do have a comment or a question, interrupt me, please, because I'm just going to keep moving. Number five, to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2022-2023 to fiscal year 23-24 totaling $14,314 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. To make an additional appropriation of $120,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the Riverside Avenue.
Skip.
Six. Thank you. Guys keeping me honest. To rescind the $200,000 appropriation within the Capital Projects Fund for the Park Street Scape project funded by bonding.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay.
Got those? Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, number seven, to make an additional appropriation of $120,000 within the Capital Projects Fund for the Riverside Avenue Streetscape project funded by bonding.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, to approve a resolution. Oh, sorry, yes. Number eight, I'm going to have.
I would like to make a motion to waive the reading of the resolutions 8 through 27, which is a little clarification. Everyone has gone through this on the Board of Finance and on the City Council side prior to this waiving.
Correct. And second, that's good. And just to add to that clarification, these were all read into the record at the Board of Finance meeting, and they're now listed in our agenda, so they will be recorded that way. All right. Roll call vote on that, if we could. And we're going to have a bunch of roll call votes here for everybody, so we'll get into the.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Panieto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebow, obviously, because you seconded it.
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Aye.
Commissioner Heiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Kasemikas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mace?
Yes.
Commissioner Mikowski, obviously.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes.
So that motion carries. We will now move through each of these. I'm just going to read the number. We don't have to read out the resolution. As I said, we've already read that out. So we will then do a roll call vote for each number, starting with eight. So we're up to eight first, which is the resolution for $120,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Very good. Now the roll call vote.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Aye.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move to number nine, which is now the bonding of the $120,000. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yep.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move to number 10, which is a resolution for the school
safety security.
Move approval.
Second.
And seconded, can we do a roll call vote for 10?
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 11 is the issuance of those bonds. Can I have a motion
to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. We move on to number 12, which is a resolution appropriating $15 million for the Edgewood School project. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And commissioners, Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. We move to number 13, which is a resolution for the issuance of those bonds. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We'll do the roll call vote.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
And Peterson?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes. So that motion approves. We're on 14, which is a resolution appropriating $850,000 for the replacement fire pumping apparatus. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 15 is the bond resolution to that same item. Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 16 is the resolution for the fire aerial apparatus.
So moved.
Second.
We do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. We're on to number 17, the issuance of the bonds for the fire aerial apparatus. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We'll go ahead. Roll call vote, sorry.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Number 18, we might break a pattern a little bit here, but this is a resolution appropriating $5 million for the revitalization of Page Park. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Approves unanimously. I wasn't expecting that. All right. Number 19 is the issuance of bonds for the Page Park revitalization, which is a larger number here, but I need a motion to approve, and we can talk about that if we need to.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. Any comments or questions on this one?
No, I was just noticing it's an aggregate, and that's why it's $5 million greater than the previous resolution we just approved.
Very good. So roll call vote on 19, please.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 20 is a resolution for $450,000 for the City Hall West Swing Space Reuse Project.
Move approval.
Second.
Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. 21 is the resolution appropriating the issuance of bonds for that project.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 22, resolution for $125,000 for the Lake Avenue Culvert. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 23 is the issuance of the bonds for the Lake Avenue Culvert. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
And Tyler?
Yes.
Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 24 is the resolution appropriating $2.85 million for the design of the new animal control facility.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Burns?
Aye.
Sorry, we're on commissioners now. Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And the mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. And 25 is the issuance of those bonds for the dog animal control facility, not just dog, animal control facility. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote on 25, please.
Councilmembers Howe?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Panieto?
Yes.
Rosengren?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
And Commissioners Burns?
Aye.
Heiser?
Yes.
Kasemikas?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Mikowski?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Number 26 is a resolution appropriating $1.2 million for the police court complex. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
To get to my report, just a couple of things, really not a lot to talk about. This completes the second month of the new fiscal year. Tax revenues, everything is in for the first round of tax collections. And as you can see in the report, we're pretty much at around 54% in the current levy, which is really consistent with last year and prior years. So there's nothing right now to be concerned about. As you know, the tax office definitely stays on top of the tax collections throughout the year. So nothing of concern to report there. And then with regard to building permit revenue, conveyance taxes, we're at 22 and 30%, which is above budget projections for the first two months. And then investment earnings were only allocated for July, but we are at $111,000, which is 11% of the budget. But if you remember, the last couple of years in total for fiscal year, over 12 months, we've collected about 200 to 250. So $111,000 for the first month of the year is very good and is reflective of the interest rates for the last few months, actually over for the last year. But other than that, nothing of concern. Expenditures right now, it is only two months into the fiscal year. Just a couple of other things to report. You did approve a lot of transfers for the end of the fiscal year for '23. You will have a couple of more coming up, probably at the next board of finance meeting for your next joint meeting, primarily with designation of fund balance. We'll have a good idea at that point where we will be with the end of the year. I know the Board of Ed, we've worked closely with them over the last few months. I have been reporting that they will need the fuel money that we had allocated for commodities. That was around $555,000, so we will need to allocate that to them next month. But they do have a few other credits that are coming through as well. And I think in total net, they will probably need an additional appropriation of around $300,000. That's the last time I spoke with them or reviewed these numbers, that's where we were. We are in the middle of the audit. The preliminary work is completed. And last month, you did approve funding to have special reviews performed on the retirement fund and on the water department and the store operating funds. So that will be through some time over the next month. And the only other thing I will report is we did schedule a capital improvement and strategic planning committee meeting for October to start talking about the criteria and our capital budget for next year. Seems like we just finished, but we're starting that all over again. So that really, I wanted to keep it short tonight because I know you had a lot of approvals of resolutions previously. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay. We don't hear any here, Diane. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Is there any other business to come before the joint board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
We're adjourned. We are going to give it a little bit of extra time because I know that we have a pretty good crowd here. So let's start at 7:15 with the city council meeting. Thank you, everybody. Okay, I think we're assembled and we're close enough to 7:15. It's right about there. I'm going to call the Tuesday, September 12 city council meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So today is September 12th, just one day past, a very tragic day in American history. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence in a few moments, but I just want to preface that with the 2,977 lives that were lost in 9/11. One of the interesting facts that I looked up today was that 345 firefighters, first responders, lost their life. And additionally, up to 200 firefighters and other first responders have lost their life to ground zero-related illnesses with all of the toxic smoke and everything that's happened there. I think it's also a little bit unfortunate and appropriate to recognize a police officer from the city of Hartford. We have a lot of connections with the Hartford Police Department. So in the moment of silence for our 9/11 officers, I also want to remember Robert "Bobby" Garten from the Hartford PD. And I'll ask that we do a moment of silence. Thank you very much. All right, number two on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting from August 8th. Oh, first of all, let's do introductions here. We haven't done that. Sue on my left.
Sue Tyler, City Council, District 2.
Jaclyn Olson, City Council, District 2.
Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District 3.
Eric Rosengrin, City Council, District 1.
Andrew Howe, District 3.
Sebastian Penioto, District 1.
And Jeff Cagiano, Mayor. Let's move on to two, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from the city council meeting on August 8th, 2023. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any additions, changes, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to public participation. Just want to make sure that we follow some meeting norms, and I haven't talked about this lately, so we would appreciate public comments from anybody. We'll start in the room here first, and I will move to Zoom, and I see we have a lot of people on Zoom. We ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes. If you can't say it in three minutes, to be very honest, it's maybe a different forum to go ahead and talk about that, so we won't time you perfectly, but we ask you to keep them to three minutes. And then just a general announcement that we ask for good decorum. This is a public meeting, and that we just ask that people are respectful and are treating the members of the council, myself, with respect as you would like to be treated. So first on my list is Scott Rosato. When you come up, if you can just state your name again and your address for the record.
Scott. Okay, there we go. Better?
You're good.
Good evening. I'm Scott Rosato, 472 Stafford Ave., and I'm here to talk about leadership. I have three quick topics. The first is, I need to clarify that there is a difference between standing against racism and standing against hate. As a community leader, as a leader in this community, I can say racism has no place in Bristol. I don't understand why you have yet to say the word racism, especially in our Bristol community where we have such a diverse population. Now, as much as I believe these conversations are necessary, what have we done to address the issue? It's not like this just happened yesterday. It's been here. And amongst yourselves, you may be content with what's going on or what's been done thus far. However, we need a plan moving forward. Second, I'm curious about the status of two issues that seem to be very easy to solve, but they can't seem to get done. On Saturday night, the city was finally able to do a show at the Rockwell Theater as part of the downtime live series. It was great, but I have to say I was a little thirsty, and there was no concession stand in sight. I asked around, and apparently you still haven't started the process for cocktails to be served. The very first step is amending the ordinance to eliminate the language that prohibits alcohol from being served on school premises. This is a public hearing and maybe two months of work tops from the ordinance committee. How is it that this has been open a year, and the one simple action has still not yet been taken? You have the power. The city, that is, has the power, especially if the city put in $20 million to fund this project. I'm not understanding why something as simple as this is not resolved. In fact, I encourage you to make a referral to the ordinance committee tonight. And lastly, I have to take issue with the fact that someone who currently owns three businesses in town called your office to speak to you on a matter, and you declined to meet with them. But after he called several departments, two days later, you returned his call and said you hear his voice. Here's the thing. He's got a legitimate question, and when I looked into it, I was hoping to get an answer too. My read of this is that there are now three vendors for the police vehicle service and repairs with three different rates. Vendor one, $75 per hour. Vendor two, $80 per hour. Vendor three, $92.50. I don't understand why the two higher bids aren't being asked to do the work at the lower level, or I guess could lower the two bids, bill their work at a higher rate. But as a taxpayer, I would assume we would be going with the lower rate as much as possible, as opposed to use the other two. For example, I remember when I plowed for the city as a private contractor, and the snowplow bid just went out. The city is looking for a bunch of private contractors to plow for the upcoming season, and that bid specifically says that all vendors are going to be paid the same rate, dependent on the weight of their trucks. It doesn't matter if it's a new truck, an old truck. It doesn't matter how good the driver's skills are, they're all being paid the same rate. So my question becomes, what is so different about the other bid? And why aren't you concerned about getting the best price for the service? Leadership is a cornerstone of any thriving community. It sets the tone for progress, inclusivity, and shared prosperity. It is the responsibility of our local leaders, including our mayor, to champion our community's values, listen to our concerns, and take action for the greater good. Thank you. Have a good night.
I would, if you don't mind, Sue, because you did that very nicely and professionally. I appreciate that. Just want to address one of them at this point. The police board will be addressing your final concern, but I also want to make sure you know that the buck stops here with no concessions at the Memorial Boulevard Theater. We fought very hard to get those programs up and running there, and we have a longstanding agreement with the Board of Education, who is nice enough to let us use this room, that we were not going to push the concessions within the school building before they were ready. I do believe that the ordinance committee has this on the docket already, and it's something that we're working for, but I made a promise, and I see Dr. Dieter over there, to the Board of Education that we would get the shows up and running, and we would worry about alcohol in the theaters later on. So I appreciate that, and we'll probably address some of your other issues later. Thank you, Scott. Next one on the list is Morris Rippey-Pattin.
Morris Patton, 49 Field Street, Bristol. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time. I do just want to address you personally and express my extreme disappointment in your public response to the press conference that was held in Bristol last week addressing the issue of racism. Your comment in the newspaper said the fight against racism should not be a political event. I stand here to tell you face to face that racism will never be a political event. It will always be extremely personal to the people that have to suffer from it and deal with it every day, so it's never a political event. You also said that I find it interesting that they had this event and didn't invite me or any Republicans. On record, the purpose of that event was to call out you for your acceptance and low-key promotion of racism in Bristol. I'm not sure how you missed that, and we also did that to give someone who's a real community leader the opportunity to say what Black and Brown people needed to hear to feel safe here. You would not give that to us. We needed it. You wouldn't give it. Someone else did. You are the problem that we are addressing, and that's the reason you were not invited. You definitely knew about it, though, because we all saw Councilwoman Tyler standing across the street with her cell phone, taking pictures, laughing, and sending texts as we sat there talking about very real issues in our community, instead of standing with Bristol, she chose to stand across the street. Racism is only presented as a political topic to people who are looking to preserve racism. The rest of people look at it as a political, or I'm sorry, as a human issue. This echoes that sentiment that you'd expressed to me when we first met back in 2015, when we had that conversation about Turbo Patriot. You called me. At the time, I was vice president of the NAACP, and you told me that calling out racism was political posturing. That was eight years ago, and you're still saying the same thing. I've seen your anti-hate campaign that's happening right now, and I could appreciate it, but my question for you would be, who stands for hate? If you stand with 99.9% of the people who don't agree with hate, are you really doing anything? No, you just stand against hate. Don't we all? Does anyone in this room stand for hate? I can't believe that anybody would. So running on hate has no home in our all-heart city and BPS, that should be common sense at this point, right? Let's stand against racism, because that's really the focus, and that's where we need to talk about the things that are happening in our city right now. Attitude affects leadership. You unfortunately have become, for a lot of us, the face of racism in Bristol. And I'd like to yield the rest of my time to give you the opportunity to say why you shouldn't be.
Appreciate your comments, but I have an announcement. Appreciate your comments, and I do have an announcement on the sign behind me, so we'll wait till that point. Anybody else wish?
Are by three minutes up?
I believe they are.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Rippey. Appreciate it. Those are the two that signed up, although I know some people may have come in late. Does anybody else in the room want to address the city council? Okay, how about on Zoom? If you would like to address the city council, you can either raise your hand or come off mute. Not hearing any. We will move on to number four, which is announcements. So maybe let me start off a little bit with announcements, just to clarify something. I have stood against racism and any form of hate from the beginning when, last July, we had racist flyers around town. There have been three potential incidents that have happened in the city where people have come in and brought flyers in, or have potentially come in and exercised their right to speak racism. I've called that out in different ways in the media. You mentioned some of them, Rippey. I am very proud that the, and I just want to clarify this point, that the superintendent reached out to me in the middle of last week and asked if we would join their continuous stand against hate. And so the sign you see behind me was a very nice gesture by the Bristol Public Schools to say, let's get together and let's put that out, and let's put our all-heart branding on it throughout the city. So I stand against all forms of hate. I think this is a great way to start, and one of the things that I really like about the partnership with the public schools is that we're starting at the youngest ages with our next generation to make sure that we move forward to denounce hate wherever we see it. So...
What about racism?
I believe that racism is a form of hatred, and I said that early in my comments here. So that was my one announcement, but let's start with, let's start on my right with Sebastian. Any announcements?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to announce that there is, if I can get it up here, and all abilities are auctioned to take place in October. This is from Opportunability, which is a nonprofit founded by our diversity council chair, Jamie Bianca. This will take place on Sunday, October 15th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at St. Andrews Church in Bristol. The event will feature artists with physical and intellectual disabilities, as well as food, performances, a book signing, raffles, vendors, and much more. The entry fee is $20 and includes two raffle tickets. Artists will not have to pay the entry fee, and they will receive 70% of the proceeds from their sales, with 30% going to Opportunability. So again, that's October 15th from 4:00 to 6:00 at St. Andrews. You can email opportunability@gmail.com for more info, or call 860-205-1875. And in addition, just some preliminary info, the Cemetery Commission and Historical Society are holding the cemetery tours at the West Cemetery, September 29th and September 30th. That's a Friday and Saturday with a rain day of October 1st. So this will be similar to last year. It'll be around 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. Tickets will be available through the Historical Society. Check city outlets, but we'll have more information forthcoming on that. That's September 29th and September 30th for the cemetery tours, the lantern tours. Thank you.
Thanks, Sebastian. Andrew?
I have just a couple from the vets. On September 17th, from 10:00 to 4:00, the World War II Legacy Foundation will be hosting End of World War II Event in East Hartford with World War II veterans from all over the state. In attendance will be three from Bristol, which the youngest coming out of Bristol is 98, and the oldest is a spry 105 years old. So they will be joined with the rest of the World War II veterans still currently alive in East Hartford, again on the 17th from 10:00 to 4:00. The Veterans Strong Community Center on November 10th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. will be hosting their Whiskey for Warriors fundraiser. The tickets are $75 and include whiskey and liquor tasting, a buffet dinner, cash bars, some swag, raffles, and entertainment. Luminaries will be available for purchase for $5. Tickets are available at the Veterans Strong Community Center at 240 Stafford Ave. Then they add one more. The Department of Veterans Affairs is having their next stand-down event, which is more of a one-stop shop for any services that the veterans need. They're help throughout many regions in Bristol, and ours will be in St. Gregory's CCD Center on 1043 Stafford Ave. Another one, October is Suicide Awareness Month, and the American Legion Post 209 will be sponsoring a suicide and domestic violence awareness walk being held at Rockwell Park on October 1st from 8:00 to 2:00. Walkers can register at the entrance to the park. The event is rain or shine, so watch your weather, bring an umbrella just in case. The Post will be collecting donations to be benefited by the St. Paul Vintage, Paul Mission, and the Prudence Crandall Center.
Thank you, Andrew. Eric?
Just a reminder, storm drains, I know it's not the taxpayers' responsibility, but if there's clogged storm drains, if you don't want to clean them, call Public Works and have them come out and clean them. With all the rain we've been having, it'll help to reduce some of the flooding and some of the water backing up into people's properties and creating damage. So if you don't want to do it yourself, just make sure you call Public Works. Another thing we have is Bingo for Memorial Mum Festival. It's a fundraiser, September 17th. It's going to be at the Polish Club on North Main. Doors open at 11:00 a.m., tickets at 12:30. Games start at 2:00. $12 admission package with $1 specials. Two winners take all, 50/50 drawing, raffle, door prizes, food available for purchase. Any questions, you can contact Janet Mellon at janetmellon@gmail.com. We also have, sponsored by the Parks Department, Parks and Rec here, Sensory Saturdays for kids, 6 to 12, September 30th and November 4th. The activities are going to be paint exploration, sensory bottles, experiments, listening cups, ice breaking, and more. $40 for residents, $45 for non-residents. Or you can go to bristlerrec.com, call the office, or stop by at 51 High Street. And that's all I have.
Thanks. Thanks, Eric. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Everybody knows I have a very soft spot for Man Ross Library, and they're starting a wonderful program. It's called Coffee Chat for English as Second Language Speakers, and this is a very casual environment where adults can come and have casual conversations in a relaxed, welcoming environment. These are going to be Wednesday nights at 6:30 for September 13th, October 11th, and November 8th, and I have this posted on my Facebook page. We'll make sure, follow the library, Man Ross Library, and Saturday mornings at 10:30, September 30th, the 28th of October, and November 25th. This is a great way to practice, you know, English and feel comfortable doing it and meeting with people and learning. So I just thought that was such a wonderful program. Coming up soon is everybody's favorite time of the year to collect leaves, and Public Works is going to be launching their leafbag collection, starting on Monday, October 16th, and the program runs through Friday, December 1st. I know you're all happy to hear that. Thank you, Scott, for talking about the show, and I'll talk more in committee, when we talk about committees, about the show that happened the other day, but we've got a couple events coming up through the City Arts and Culture Commission in October. I know we have another meeting before then, but if you're like me, you want to get this on your calendar now so you don't double-book. So on Saturday, the 28th, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. is the Halloween Spooktacular, and this is a great event. There'll be trick-or-treating through the vendors, there'll be mummy special effects makeup demos, there'll be scary reading circles, there'll be vendors with food, hot cocoa, coffee, treats, face painters, and so forth. There's also a lot of arts and crafts, and we're bringing back the pumpkin carving contest. So bring your best carved pumpkin with a battery-powered light to the event for a chance to win the pumpkin carving contest. But that night is also the second show that the arts, City Arts and Culture is putting on at the Memorial Boulevard, well, the former Memorial Boulevard, Rockwell Theater, and that's the Rocky Horror Picture Show. It starts, doors open at 5:30. There's a pre-show at 6:15. Showtime is 7:00. Tickets are only $16.50. They're going fast, but this show is R-rated, so please keep that in mind if you have children, that it is an R-rated show. So lastly, with the Rockwell Theater, we're always looking for volunteers, okay? We're going to have ushers, people who work in the parking lot, people who sell concessions, people who sell merchandise. So if you're interested in volunteering, we do have an application. It is on the City Arts and Culture page. I also have it posted. If anybody just wants to call me, I'll even mail one out to you. It's better to fill it out online because then we can throw it right in the database, but we'd love to have you volunteer. So those are, oh, I think that's it for my announcements. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Jackie, any announcements?
Yes, first I'd like to thank Ray from the Public Works and his crew for the great installation of the pavers at BAMEs. It was a job well done. Everyone is very pleased. The Friends of the Bristol Senior Center are going to be sponsoring a meet and greet to candidates on Wednesday, October 4th, 1:30 at the Senior Center in the main dining room, and each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves and to speak. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Sue, any announcements?
A couple, yes. This Saturday, the 16th, is Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce First Brew Fest, and it will be held at Muzzy Field. It runs from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. There will be live music and food trucks, and the most frequently asked question this week is, is there a rain date? Just in case Hurricane Lee does make, you know, a little havoc here in Connecticut. And the rain date, if there is more than just some wind and a little bit of rain, will be the very next day on Sunday, the 17th. But if there is a little bit of wind, a little bit of rain, they're still going to go ahead and hold it. I think it's appropriate to kind of remind everyone, this is September in Bristol, and we do have our Mum Festival coming up in a little, almost two weeks now. So just a couple of key points. You can find all this information online, but the Mum Parade is Sunday, the 24th, from 1:30 to 3:30. The festival itself actually runs from September 22nd through the 24th, which is that Sunday that the parade is on. This year, we also have, we're really proud to say that our festival grand marshal is our very own Police Chief Brian Gould. And I just found something here when I was looking through the history of the Mum Parade, and I just want to read this. I'm kind of reading it mid-paragraph, but "The first chairman of the festival opened the festivities inviting everyone to the first open house events, which were very welcoming, to Bristolites, to the American Clock and Watch Museum, the Bristol Water Company, and the newly remodeled Northside Bank and Trust Company. Members of the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Bristol officials met and completed a six-day-long schedule of events aiming to focus attention on the many positive factors in Bristol. Many felt that there is a great deal to be proud of in Bristol, and that spotlight should be turned onto the things too frequently taken for granted." I thought that was very appropriate for everything that we're working on. And just to kind of wrap that up, again, any information about the Mum Festival can be found online, on Facebook, on the Bristol Exchange Club website, but I also wanted to give a shout-out to three businesses in District 2. District 2 is the home of the Mum, and that's what the whole Mum Festival is about. So in your travels, if you're looking for some Mums for your house, we have three awesome businesses. We have Bristol Blossoms at 250 Terrival Avenue. We have Garden at Pinehurst Farm over on the site of the original nursery here in Bristol. They're located at 50 Pinehurst Road, and we have Watu-Six Nursery over at 750 Terrival Avenue. All of them have just gotten in tons of Mums, and so if you're feeling in the Mum Festival spirit, visit one of our local businesses.
Thank you. I'm glad you did Mum Festival. I was going to add that if we didn't. Andrew, any others to add?
I just need to piggyback on Cheryl. The...
The, you can't have the props at the Rocky Horror Picture Show. The crazy props are not allowed like you would normally see.
Toilet paper, all that kind of stuff. I have not been yet, but I am going, so that'll be fun. All right, any other announcements? Great, we'll move forward with our agenda, and we are at number five, which is the consent calendar. And so I know our first order of business here is we need to
Remove.
Remove completely 5D, because 5D was actually already approved and I actually signed the contract for that today. So I'll entertain a motion to remove 5D from the consent calendar. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, left on the consent calendar is A through C and then E through G. So I'll entertain a motion unless somebody else has something else they want to pull out?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
And that is A through D, I'm sorry, A through C and E through G. We got the motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number six is reports and committee reports. So our first is from the Ordinance Committee, and Commissioner Tyler, or Councilwoman Tyler, excuse me, you will go ahead and do that one for us.
Okay, so first up is, under ordinance, I have a motion to waive, can I make a motion to waive the reading?
You can, I'll take that as a motion. Can we have a second?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, all right. Now the...
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to introduce, in accordance with Section 41-F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, at 4:50 p.m. in Meeting Room 2, Police Complex Center, 131 Main, North Main Street, 2nd Floor Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
So move.
Second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Do give Eric the second on that one. Any comments or questions or anything to add?
Just a quick overview on this one. This is a proposed ordinance that will give our code, our building official, a little bit more teeth to be able to take action when people within the City of Bristol, whether it be commercial or residential, does work without obtaining an actual building permit.
Excellent. Questions or comments from the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries. Sue, I'm going to stay with you, and I know that you have another thing that you want to talk about, we can bring in another new business, but it is also related to code enforcement, which you just mentioned, so I don't know if you want to bring that up here. And these are going to be whatever committee reports or liaison reports you have as well.
Okay, so under code enforcement, just really quickly, just a few numbers for this past month. Code enforcement continues to be extremely busy. In August, we had 59 complaints, which is the highest number of complaints in any given month for the entire year of 2023. Of that, 49 violation letters were sent and citations issued, it says two. Also, Public Works did issue a total of $2,520 worth of violations under their piece of code enforcement. And we are also working very hard to establish a computer program that will allow all code enforcement partners to be able to communicate more effectively and to increase the efficiency of the code enforcement team. We're hoping to have that up and running by the first of the year. Also, with code enforcement, I do have a motion to make, and then, let me make the motion and then I can explain a little bit of what this is about.
Works for me.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that, at its meeting, code enforcement meeting of September 6, 2023, the code enforcement committee voted to have a clean and lean done on the property known as 37 Union Street. To date, the owners of this property, occupied property, I'm sorry, of this owner occupied property have paid three citations totaling $2,268. In this special case, these citation funds should be applied towards the clean and lean expense, which could be substantial. Therefore, I hereby move that the $2,268 paid to date in citations by the owners of 37 Union Street be applied as a credit to the final clean and lean invoice and that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council's office to effectuate the same.
And just a point of order here, I want to make sure that we're okay. Do we need a motion to bring the new business to the floor?
Yes.
So let's do that first, sorry. A motion to bring
I make a motion to bring new business to the floor.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. You don't have to read that all again.
You need to read it again?
But you can, as moved, I think we got it from the clerk's side, and you can hand that to them after. So now we have the motion on the floor that Sue brought up to take the fines that we have for the clean and lean that's been ordered and apply those to the clean and lean. We need a second.
A second.
Great, now you can talk a little bit more about it.
So this is, you know, I just want to remind everyone, you know, the whole reason why code enforcement is such a very important piece of city government is the three things that with code enforcement, you know, it's to protect property owners' investments, promote public health, safety, and welfare, and it's to enhance the quality of life in our neighborhoods and also Bristol's image. Code enforcement, to me, I'm very passionate about this, this is one of the most essential things that government can work on to help improve all of that in our neighborhoods and in our community. So having said that, we have been working with the occupants of this particular house when the initial violation complaint was received by code enforcement. A warning letter was sent out and then tickets were issued. The homeowner paid the tickets immediately. There was never any contact, never any, you know, to see like, well, how can I, you know, fix this, or what are these tickets about? And when we finally did make contact, you know, the reason why we issue code tickets, it's to gain compliance, it's not to increase our general fund. So when some of us from code enforcement actually made contact with the homeowner, we found an older couple in very overwhelming and chaotic conditions and life struggles. And, you know, and I asked the female homeowner, you know, you received these tickets and you just paid them, like, how come, how come you didn't reach out? And in tears, the homeowner said, because I pay my bills. So there was definitely a disconnect and, again, we're not just trying to increase our general fund. With the clean and lean, the homeowners, I believe, are very open to the assistance that the clean and lean is going to do. And I just feel that the, you know, $2,200 worth of tickets that were paid should be applied to the credit. And I think that this is what we kind of need to do because we are all heart.
Appreciate that. I'll add, I think you said it very well, but I will add just a couple other factors as well, too, so that the audience knows what's happened here. We have stepped up code enforcement quite a bit in the last two years. We actually have several clean and leans that are now on the docket, and we're finding that most of these are for owner occupied homes that people are having a hard time keeping up with. So it's almost a godsend for them to have this happen. On the other hand, we have had thousands of dollars of tickets and citations, many of which have been appealed, but have led to cleaning up of properties. And most of those properties tend to be the landlord-owned properties, and that's where we do have a lot of problems. So it's a little different circumstance, I want to let people know that. I think the other great reminder for this is that there is an appeals process, and at least from your conversations directly with this couple, they might not have availed themselves to that or really known that was available, so we want to make sure that that's a good public service announcement as well. Any questions from the council on this issue or any other comments?
The clean and lean expense, I'm sure, is going to surpass
Yes.
the credit that we're looking for here.
Yeah, and in most of these cases, we are as patient as we can be, and they are what I would call catastrophic cases where homeowners are unfortunately unable to get out of the mess that they've gotten into in their home. So I think this is definitely one of those examples, it was on the code enforcement meeting agenda two or three months, so, yep. All right, any questions? All right, all those in favor of applying the citations to the clean and lean, please vote yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Great, thanks. Any other committee reports, Sue, or liaison reports?
I believe we're all set for this month.
Very good. Jackie, I'll turn to you next.
I have one there.
Great, Sue.
No.
Oh, Sue.
Sure.
That is one of those things.
Okay. That's all right. Okay, first of all, I just want to come back to the City Arts and Culture. We did have, you know, our first live concert in Rockwell Theater, and this was celebrating Queen. Overall, the committee volunteers all felt that, given, you know, the extenuating circumstance of losing power three quarters into the show, everything else seemed to go very smooth. You know, this was done by a small committee, the City Arts and Culture Committee. We have a part-time theater manager, Ariana Terrio, who did a fabulous job, and of course, Dr. Josh Maderas from the Parks, to put these shows together, the four. And we're also learned a lot from that first night. We knew the first night, there might be bumps outside of losing power, as I mentioned. One of those bumps was concessions, okay? We, when we met on Wednesday night, our goal was to have water and some other beverages, non-alcoholic beverages, and some snacks. And we were going to use an ordering system and the pricing, and things weren't working out as well, okay? And so it was a decision to nix that and get it ready for the next show and do it right. And these are some of the things in startup that you learn. As far as, you know, the ushers and people finding their seats, for people parking, for everything, everybody was on time for the show, by the way. I don't think that there was one patron that was late. We overall felt it went smooth. The band was fabulous. And even after losing power, just to show you what kind of performers we have, they led a couple songs without instruments, acapella, and then led the audience in singing Bohemian Rhapsody. It was amazing, it was probably the best rendition I've ever heard. People leaving the theater were smiling, they were still content. We gave everybody a survey, and so we're going to ask people who went to give us their feedback, what went well, what could we improve? Because we've got a month before the next show, and this is how learning happens, and this is what we're doing. Now, in regards, as the mayor addressed it already, the matter of having alcohol has been on, the ordinance, we brought it up three months ago or such. And at this point, we know that there are things that the Department of, the Board of Education has to do in concert with this. So for us to proceed without the Board of Education proceeding, we'd be at a stalemate if we did everything we did, and we might have to change what we do. And why have a public hearing if you're going to have to re-change it? So we are waiting for that to roll forward. That said, I think most people know that we're not, and it's a great time to go visit some of our local restaurants, Monterey's right around the corner, we have Pint and Plate, and get that beverage in at one of our local restaurants. Until such time, we do. It's the full intent of the committee to have this up and running. And like I said, things are going well. So our next meeting is October 4th. We meet the first Wednesday of the month, so if you'd like to come and give some feedback, we'd love to hear it, or you can just, if you need one of those forms and didn't get one, let me know. But I just wanted to share that, and if anybody here, because I see several faces that were at the show have anything they want to share, love to hear from them. So thank you for giving me a couple minutes, and I just want to touch upon another thing that's really, you know, first of all, thank you, Board of Ed, it's been sweet, but we don't want to be here next month. We want to, and it's the goal of the Public Works Committee and our Public Works Director, Ray, to hopefully get a conditional certificate of occupancy and have the October council meeting in the newly renovated City Hall council chambers. There are several steps, of course, that have to complete. It's a tight schedule. It's my understanding that the elevator testing will begin next week, that is a critical phase, so is the MEP start and commissioning and completing of other finishes throughout the building. The furniture has started to be delivered and put together in various stages. At one point, this is from actually a report, it might even be outdated, there was at the time about 40 people working in the building at any given time in different capacities and different disciplines. So the goal is a move in sometime in the next, you know, in October, but hopefully at a minimum to have our meeting in council chambers. And another big, and I hats off to Ray, Ray Rogosinski, who is our Public Works Director, and his teams and all those, you know, we've got D'Amato Downs, who'd have been our contractors and all those involved, because it is a tight schedule and it's been, you know, a lot of work. And we're proud to say, we're still coming in under budget, that the project surplus is estimated to be between $900,000 and $1.1 million, which is fantastic. So I just wanted to give that update. Mayor, I don't know if you want to add to that, or if, you know, our Public Works Director wants to, but that is my report from Public Works Committee.
Only other thing to add on the City Hall portion is, these dates might be a little fluid, so I don't have a definitive date of what we'll call a grand opening, an ability for the public to tour and a ribbon cutting, but I know we have members in the audience here who were part of the original concept of the building, so we will be letting them know as soon as we can when we can do that, but it's probably going to be a Saturday later in October, so that the public can view the building and we can do an official ribbon cutting with the new plaque that does include both the previous administration and our current administration, because this is a nice handover project. So, thank you, appreciate that. Anything else, Cheryl?
No, no, thank you.
Sorry about the name thing. You know I do it every day, by the way. Eric, you're up.
I'm pretty light, but I have, Fair Rent Commission is off the ground. It's a new commission, not a lot of people, I don't know if you guys are aware of yet, we have, it's called, it's a fair rent commission. Basically, it's mediation, it helps if a landlord comes in and says, wow, your rent was $1,000, now I'm changing it to $1,500 with no warning, and it's not like a fair market value. It consists of renters, homeowners, landlords, tenants, all kinds of people, so everybody's represented. It's just starting out, we've just heard our first case, last meeting, we're still waiting on some reports back from building and from Bristol Burlington Health for this next coming up meeting. So that's new. Board of Ed is starting to get back to its regular meetings, which I'm pretty excited about, because everybody's back to school. Great meeting, so I didn't, we didn't have, I didn't have a Board of Ed this last. And Bristol Housing Authority will resume again this month. They took last month off, so I got to slack a little this month, so that was nice. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Eric. Andrew, what do you have?
One quick one from the Parks. Superintendent Maderos and Deputy Super Sarah Larson have another award to add to their shelf. The EG Stocks Playground renovation project won the 2023 Connecticut Recreational and Parks Association Facility of Merit Award. The award recognizes department that developed or renovated an exceptional facility within the last two years. The superintendent will be accepting this prestigious award at the annual CRPA conference in November. And from the ladies at the School Readiness Council, if you're still looking out there, looking for high-quality preschool experience looking for high-quality preschool experience for the child, please reach out to the school readiness-funded sites. Full days available at Bristol Child Development Center in Imagination, a museum early learning center, and half-days at the Edgewood Pre-K Academy. The Connecticut Blue Ribbon Panel on Childcare Just Relief released its draft plan, which you can access at C T O E C dot org. You can find information about the Blue Ribbon Panel, the draft plan, and the public sharing sessions under the About O E C tab.
Thank you. Sebastian?
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Did we miss anything, anybody? Nope, we will move on to number seven, then, which is old business. I'm not aware of any old business. Does anybody have any old business? How about new business? No new business? If we could read the resignations, Erica, that would be great.
We have two resignations. Sarah Garette from the School Readiness Council and Mark Gagnon from the Zoning Commission.
Motion to put the resignations on file and have a letter sent thanking the individuals for their service, please.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? A motion carries. All right, appointments, not too many this month. So we have first, on the Bristol Burlington and Health Department, we are going to replace Kathy Burness, oops, hang on a second, we're going to hold up on that one, I apologize. Diversity Council, we are going to appoint Sandra Caymans, Jordan Lopez, Olivia Chapladine, and Antonio Lopes. And Erica, there's no term on that, right? So these are not termed positions. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, just a quick little overview on this one as well, too. I think we still have one more opening on the Diversity Council. We've had a working relationship, both Jamie and I, who became a new chair, I don't know, eight months ago, nine months ago, and one of the things that we talked about is we had lost quite a few members, so we wanted to make sure we had good communication and that all individuals that were going to come on were going to be committed to the Diversity Council, and we're going to be approved by both Jamie and myself, so I'm happy to say that we have finally moved that forward, and these are the four individuals we're going to work with, and as I said, we have one more opening on the Diversity Council. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, School Readiness Council. So I would like to appoint Deana Shaffrick to the term that expires on eight-twenty-six, that's a citizen-at-large, and then Courtney Sugarman, who is the BPS, Bristol Public Schools Special Education Representative, and that term also expires on eight-twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
And we do have Deana in the audience, so we appreciate moving this forward, and I think we're full now, right, Donna? I think that board is pretty full, yes. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On transportation, we are going to replace Rand Sean Gingery with Joseph Wasta, and that term will expire on one-twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Great, we have one more left, I think, on transportation, or is that full?
No, we have at least one more.
One more.
One more as well. But we are moving forward with this one as well, and there's a lot more happening with our downtown development and transportation, so hopefully if anybody's interested, they will come forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the Zoning Commission, we had the resignation that was read earlier, so we need to replace Mark Gagnon with John LaFreniere, and that term will expire on seven-twenty-six. John is coming up from the alternate position.
Correction.
Oh.
Term will expire June twenty-five.
June twenty-five, thank you very much, so six-twenty-five, so I'll entertain a motion to replace Mark with John, term to expire six-twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Who'd you give it to? Okay, good, you got it, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And that's it for this month. We have done a pretty good job in catching up to appointments to boards and commissions. It does get very difficult to fit with minority representation, but we have a couple more that were pending. I actually started to read them, but we like to make sure that we get the right people in there and make sure they're fit. So if people are interested, we continue to encourage people to reach out to the mayor's office on that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. What about arts and culture?
We, we decided to hold on that one.
Hold off, okay, thank you.
That individual would like to go to a meeting first, but thank you for bringing it up, because I know it was there. Any others, by the way, Erica? Okay, good, we're on board with that. Next are our regular meeting items. Number eleven is to approve the change order for Save More Cooling and Heating LLC. It totals two-hundred-twenty-two thousand dollars, two-hundred, two-hundred-twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-forty-five dollars and seven cents, as recommended by the Green Hills HVAC Project Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or question on this one? This is part of a long process there, but we're getting done.
I'll just add, I'm on that committee, we, we actually had a couple meetings on this because the committee was very hesitant to have more cost incurred, but after reviewing more in detail, some of the items that were included in these change orders, the committee felt they were necessary, and hopefully this should be the end of any kind of change orders, at least that's our, our hope.
Yep, we'll get that building to new eventually, and then we'll be replacing other things. But anyway, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve is to place on file the positive referrals from the Bristol Planning Commission for the following properties pursuant to see Connecticut General Statute, Section eight-dash-twenty-four, and they are, A, which is two-hundred-eight Louisiana Avenue, Assessors Map Forty-eight, Lot One-Ninety-B, and Marsh Road, Assessors Map Sixty-five, Lot Ten.
So moved.
Second.
Yep, and from the Real Estate Committee, I don't know if you guys want to add anything else on this, these are two properties that came up recently, and the information's in there. Anything else to add, Sue?
Uh, one is a piece of city-owned property that a, an adjoining homeowner would like to purchase from the City of Bristol, and one is a piece of property that wants to be sold to the City of Bristol, and we're just waiting for the eight-dash-twenty-four to finish up and to come back to real estate so that we can make our decisions appropriately.
That second one is the landlocked land, correct, that the Water Department has adjacent land, too.
Correct.
Yep, very good. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Number thirteen, award the contract two-P-two-four dash zero-zero-one, which is Design and Construction Engineering Services, Broad Street, Pecobic River Retaining Wall to Wengel, McDonald's, and Costello Incorporated in the amount of eighty-three thousand dollars, eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Fourteen, to amend the contract two-P-two-two dash zero-nine-six with GM Two Associates Incorporated in the amount of three-hundred-eight thousand, one hundred dollars to include the design of the Connecticut DOT proposed improvements.
Move approval.
Second.
Great, and this is in combination with both our CIF grant, and the Connecticut DOT has stepped forward to do an awful lot of work down that entire Route Seventy-two corridor, but we are responsible for the design work, which this is going to, so I think we've been through that with Public Works. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number fifteen, to amend the contract two-P-two-two dash zero-nine-five with Wengel, McDonald, and Costello Incorporated in the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars to include the storm drainage analysis and design to the Bristol Plainville Town Line.
So moved.
Second.
Another public works project. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number sixteen, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign any and all documents required to execute the city-state local bridge program agreement for the Lake Avenue Bridge Culvert. The number for that is zero-one-seven-zero-zero-five, and that's over the Cus Gutter Brook over on Lake Avenue.
Move approval.
Second.
I never knew the Cus Gutter Brook existed until this. Any comments or questions? Another public works project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number seventeen, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign any and all documents required to execute the city-state local bridge program agreement for the Jerome Avenue Bridge, zero-four-zero-nine-one, over the Freeman Hill Brook.
So moved. Second.
Comments or questions on this one? Go ahead, Cheryl.
I was just going to say, before this happens, there's, there will be significant community notification because it does impede some significant traffic with significant detours, so we'll be well aware, you know, and notice as much as we can on this project.
Appreciate that, and agreed. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number eighteen, to amend contract two-C-two-three-zero-five-eight-A with Tobacco and Sun Builders Inc. in the amount of seventy-six thousand, nine-hundred-eighteen dollars to include additional storm drainage work.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Last one, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign any and all documents related to the conveyance of property from the state of Connecticut to the City of Bristol, located at the intersection of East Road and Union Street and associated with project zero-zero-one-seven-dash-one-six-one.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions about this, East Street Bridge? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, for number twenty, we will go into executive session in a second, just want to check with the attorneys, so the attorneys, just the attorneys and city council. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Move to my right, seconded to my left. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're all here, just a reminder-
Recording in progress.
-in executive sessions, there was no votes taken. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And Eric, you have the motion?
I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter a full and final settlement in the matter of Mariah Jackes versus City of Bristol, WCC File six-zero-one-zero-nine-two-one-six-four, For any and all workers' compensation claims filed by Myra Jackes for the total amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, the date of these claims are listed below but are not limited to the following: September twenty-eighth, two thousand and nine, March second, two thousand and sixteen, October nine, twenty nineteen, December fourteenth, twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, May twenty-four, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-three. Because she will not be returning to work, an additional and full settlement amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, Myra Jackes' health insurance benefits will continue up and to the point of her retirement on March first, twenty twenty-four. At that time, she will be eligible for her full retirement benefits effective March one, twenty twenty-four. I further move that the mayor, acting mayor, corporate counsel, or assistant corporate counsel be authorized to execute the full and final settlement.
And I need a second.
Second.
Great, who'd you, you got a second? Good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. I don't believe there's any other business to come before us.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All, all those in favor, we'll do it. We don't need it, but we're adjourned.